I'd like to open the Select Board meeting on October 8, 2024 at 6:30. This is an in-person meeting. 138 Main Street, Wyndham Mass, first floor. As a convenience to the public, it is available electronically via the Zoom link below or via HW Cam for viewing and participation. In the event of a technology failure, the meeting will continue in person. Please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast live via Zoom. It is also recorded for playback video on demand viewing at HWcam.org. Please note that other than call to order, all times are estimated. Items may be taken out of order. Welcome, call to order. Public input. Purpose for public comment on matters falling within the jurisdiction of the Select Board and not on the current agenda. Note, public comment on specific agenda items with a public comment period will be deferred until those items are reached. Rules, 10 minutes per person. A person may speak only once. 10 minutes total. All participants wishing to address the Select Board during public comments may do so in person or via Zoom by virtually raising their hand. Speakers must identify themselves by name and street address, please. The Select Board may not deliberate or vote on matters discussed during public comment but are not on the agenda. Let's start off with reports and announcements with the town administrators' updates and town announcements.
Thank you. A few updates for us tonight. So first is tomorrow, so short notice, but Wednesday, October 9, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the fire station will be, they'll be holding an open house. They're going to be serving for no charge, Five Sons pizza and ice cream from Cherry Farm Creamery. So they'll be, you know, bring the kids down there and you can learn some safety tips. You check out the fire trucks and things like that. So that's tomorrow, again, 5:00 to 7:00 at the firehouse. The Seventh Annual Reeds Across America Ceremony will take place Saturday, December 14, 2024, at 12:00 p.m. This year, 515 reeds will be placed on veteran graves buried within the Wyndham cemeteries. So contributions are welcome to help ensure that all 515 veteran graves are recognized, make donations payable to the town of Wyndham. Checks can be mailed or dropped off at Town Hall. Again, if this, all this stuff is on social media, it's on the website. If you have any questions, call the Select Board office or really any office in town will be able to point you in the right direction, so. Bagged leaf pickup. So again, this is the, just a reminder that we no longer do the leaf pickup where they do the piles and the DPW comes around and sucks up the leaves. So now it's a bagged leaf pickup. It has to be bagged in the appropriate paper bags that you can pick up at Lowe's or Home Depot. And you have to make sure that they're placed on the curbside by 7:00 a.m. on collection day. And the two collection days are Saturday, November 9, and December 14. And from a staffing perspective, an update, we recently extended an offer to Linda Emerson. She is a retired town clerk to fill the role in the clerk's office formerly filled by Margaret Brown, which is essentially a clerk support, staffing support for the town clerk. She'll fill this role roughly three to six hours a week. And we put together an interview panel for staff members and ultimately unanimously chose Ms. Emerson amongst the four other candidates. And that is all I have for tonight.
I have nothing to add. Any members? Deirdre, really?
Sorry, Peter.
Did we have anybody for public comment?
I have a little list. Do you have a minute?
Okay. I wanted to reiterate the Wyndham Fire Open House, which is set for tomorrow, 5:00 to 7:00. It's very exciting and the kids love it. It's a great community event. We have a few different community events here. On Friday, October 18th, so a little over a week, we have the Bukeur Fun Run, starts at 9:00 a.m. The entire community is welcome to come out and cheer on the kids. It's a great fundraiser, which is going to benefit their enrichment for the entire year, so everyone is encouraged. The COA regularly sets up a donut station right outside, so anybody who is scheduled to participate in the morning meetings are encouraged to stay. We have a few other things here. We have a Harvest Social that is going to be set up on Wednesday, October 23, directly at the First Church in Wyndham, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. And that is working directly with Accord Pantry and the Three Sister Garden Project that Ben and I have had the luxury of meeting with numerous times in the last couple of weeks. The goal is to discuss food insecurities around town as well as a partnership in their vision for the community, so all are welcome. The Girl Scouts will be handing out different items and probably encouraging everyone to support their cookie efforts, so I encourage everyone to participate in that. On Thursday, November 11, I'm sorry, Thursday, November 7, from 4:00 to 5:30, the Girl Scouts will be putting, the entire Girl Scouts for all Hamilton, Wyndham, will be putting together poppy pins in celebration of the veterans ceremony that's going to be taking place on Veterans Day. At that time, they're welcoming all veterans, uniforms preferred, to come in, to meet with the girls, and to give them a little bit of a story as to what their background is. It'd be really nice to be able to engage some of these young minds and give them some exposure to what Veterans Day really means. And on November 21st, we are participating in a community blessing bags. It's essentially putting together bags for the homeless, which will be distributed that evening by the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts. That, the bags consist of homeless items that will then be dropped off at Life Bridge. A community Amazon list will be sent out. We're asking for as many donations as possible. The goal last year was to make 50. The girls and boys made 88. This year, the goal is 120. On October 24th, we have the Community Trunk or Treat, which is encouraged by everybody to attend. There's exciting pumpkin carving, decorating, decorating the cars, an exciting afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00. And lastly, I want to make sure that I let everybody know that I am holding office hours from 12:00 to 1:00 at the library. It's been extremely successful on Mondays the last couple of weeks. I've had some great conversations with people regarding contracts, 3A updates, everything from schools initiatives to where they want sidewalk paving updated. So if people have the availability to come, I completely encourage you to do so. It's been a great option for me to be able to touch base with the community presence, and I would love to engage with as many people as possible.
Well, there you go.
I missed the last meeting. I had a list.
Now move on to the consent agenda. Routine items for approval and a single motion allowing them to be passed without discussion unless held. A, minutes. We have no minutes to approve this, at this meeting. B, a one-day liquor license for the First Church in Wyndham.
Are we going to open? Did no one have public comment?
Did anybody?
I don't know. I'm sorry. I apologize. Does anybody want to comment?
Any public?
Public comment.
For items not on the agenda.
This is for public comment, not on items on the agenda. Yeah. Okay, because we went right over.
Yeah, sorry. I know. I talk too much. Courtney Ashoid, 49 Porter Street in Wyndham. So I just wanted to make a brief comment to the board this evening, just in relation to the amount of times I've been emailing you guys. And first and foremost, I, you know, express my gratitude. I appreciate you guys, what you do for the town. I never mean to come across as contentious or aggravated or judgmental of you, so I just wanted to say that tonight. I know I have an email on the agenda later. But the reason that I am so engaged is just because more and more it feels like, you know, legislature is getting passed in executive sessions, emergency, and, you know, if you have an elected board that when you're listening and tuning in, isn't aligning with your own views, your only chance to have a voice is to reach out. So that's why I engage with you guys. And, you know, I don't want to do it in a manner that's disrespectful, but I'm hoping that, you know, we can have these conversations without labels like pitchforks and racist and those kind of things. So I just wanted to make sure I stated that. I do respect you guys. I do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you, Courtney.
Anyone else? Do we have anybody?
Zoom?
No.
Now we will move on to the consent agenda. Routine items for approval, oh, I read that. Minutes, we don't have any. B, one-day liquor license for the First Church in Wyndham for Wednesday, October 23, 2024, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. C, a one-day liquor license for the Wyndham Museum, 132 Main Street, for Thursday, October 24, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And D, Housing Authority appointment, John W. Buco.
Okay, so before we move the consent agenda, I'd just, I'd like to move first to amend item D, the Housing Authority appointment, because it needs a term specified. So I'd like to move to amend item D to appoint John Buco to the Housing Authority through April 9, 2025, which is the expiration of the current vacant seat, which will then be on, up for election on Election Day.
All in favor? Peter says aye. Yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Okay, now we'll move, so I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes. Okay, we're going to move to new business items for individual consideration. These items will allow for public comment, 10 minutes. Purpose, this comment period will allow for public comment on individual and will be held before or after the board's discussion of the agenda item at the discretion of the chair. The rules are, 2 minutes per person. A person may speak only once. 10 minutes total per item unless noted on agenda item. And we are going to move the order around, and what we'd like to do now is move down to H and discussion, discussion and potential both to sign the warrant for state election.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, it's Diane Buco, your town clerk. And yes, the Select Board needs to sign the warrant for the state election, which is also known as the presidential election, scheduled for November 5, 2024. Both precincts will be voting at the museum, which is stated on the warrant. Both precincts have just about the same ballot, except for the representative in general court. We have Precinct 1, the 6th, 6th Essex District, with a race amongst, I think, three or four candidates. And Precinct 1A has Sally Karins for the 13th Essex District, running unopposed. And so tonight, I just wanted to know if you had any questions about Election Day or any plans going forward that I could answer for you.
So we currently have vote by mail starting soon and then early voting?
Correct. So the ballots were, arrived last week. 849 vote by mail ballots went out yesterday. Another 50 or so will go out tomorrow, and then they'll just go out as they come. We have about 27 overseas ballots that have gone out electronically. And absentee balloting, voting is available anytime that Town Hall is open. And early, in-person, early voting will start Saturday, October 19. That's all posted on the website, and I have little flyers out front if anyone wants those times and dates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion?
All good.
So I move to approve and sign the 2024 warrant for state election. Discussion? Nope. All right. So Peter's votes, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Perfect. Such an easy vote. I do have one little thing that you might want to amend in your consent agenda. The term for the Housing Authority would go through Election Day, which is April 10.
Off by a day.
Yeah. So I don't know if you want to just make that.
Purposely said the day before, but.
Yeah, we said the day before.
The day before, but yeah, it's actually through Election Day, hoping someone would get.
Diane, just a question for you.
Yes.
So have you marked out or are going to mark out the boundaries?
The 150-foot rule? Yes.
Okay, great.
Yep, so it's already done. I've discussed it with the police department as well, so they're aware, and I will post that. There will be signs. What it does is it moves the 150-foot rule more this way, which means the front property there will be, of Town Hall will be available, and that island across the way that I believe belongs to the church is part of that 150-foot rule, is after the 150-foot rule.
Got it.
So I think actually it'll be better for the traffic concerns, because it will be a little bit further away from the intersection itself.
Right.
Maybe. Just an idea.
Nope.
So should we amend the consent? Should we amend item D? Yes?
You can.
This one's done, right? We voted?
We're done. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. All right, I'll move to amend the consent agenda, agenda, item D, to correct it to say through April 10, 2025.
Second? Vote. Peter says yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes. Okay, so now we're going to go back to our regularly scheduled program. A presentation by Peter West of revised logos and taglines for the town of Wyndham branding initiative. Public input allowed for 20 minutes. We really want people to weigh in and participate in this process.
All right, so unfortunately, something came up and Peter was unable to join us tonight. However, what you have here before us is a presentation he put together that includes all of the feedback he received, both from the public and the Select Board, over the last couple of weeks. It's down to, you know, what he believes is the two final versions. So just a reminder that our deadline for the submissions of these for the website is October 18, I believe, which is next Friday. So if the board does not come to a decision tonight, there is still time to host, you know, quote-unquote, an emergency meeting if we had to, for further revisions. So that to say that, you know, we can have open discussion tonight, gather input from the public, and if there are further revisions that you'd like to see done, that can be done, but just understanding that we would have to call a meeting outside of your regularly first and third Tuesday of the month.
Wait, what's the time pressure?
It's next, probably the day, I believe it's the 18th, which is next Friday. So that's the submission for the website. They're hard, they're hard, basically hard deadlines. So we have a timeline that is, you know, they've put out in front of us, they've, you know, tied up the capacity internally, and we've kind of made the promise to meet their deadlines, and if we meet their deadlines, they'll meet our deadline by having it go live by January. So delaying this, they stress that, you know, the way they schedule things are so tight and, you know, with the capacity, that if you kind of lose your window, it could delay the project months, not just a week, because you've kind of lost your, you know, your place on the calendar, and you've got to wait till another opening on that team, the implementation team opens up.
So do we have anybody in the public who wants to comment?
When we scroll down to.
Yeah, why don't you show them?
Yeah, I'll go through the, I'll go through the examples, and then we can open it up. So as he said, revision three. So here is example one. One more. And option two.
Two A.
Yeah, two A, the alternate. With the kind of the barn structure, fully containing. And moving down, we can go, we can bring this back up, but just keep going. We'll take a look at the taglines just quickly. And so this, this list is comprised of variations of the ones that the town seemed to like with some editing, and also brought back some new ones.
Can we go back to the options?
Yeah, sure. Let's just give everyone a chance. Once everyone's read through here, we'll jump back to the options. All right, can I jump back to the, do the one with the four, like the side-by-side comparison?
There you go.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick note, Kate Mallory is available for questions if you have some as well.
Pardon?
Kate Mallory is available on Zoom if you have questions as well.
Okay, great. So did we have anybody here to comment on the logos and taglines? All right.
Are you looking for open comment from us?
Yeah.
Everybody, yeah.
I think everyone's looking to chime in.
Thank you.
Well, the first correction, it has to be incorporated, not established. 1643.
Incorporated?
Yep. And then personally, I prefer the upper left one as displayed as opposed to lower left, because I think you need the W in the logo rather than just the sun, which I'm not sure how the sun works into town at all. Okay. Any other thoughts, guys?
I do, but I.
So I'll go. Unfortunately, I'm not a huge fan of the entire left side. Originally, when I looked at it very quickly, I didn't have my glasses on, they looked like pineapples to me. Not really sure where the sun comes in, and I truly feel like it has a summer camp vibe. The essence of Wyndham to me is, is more of not only the nostalgic, the nostalgic aspects of our town, but we have that rich history here, and I feel like the right side just embodies that a little bit more. And the left side is, is a little bit more modern than I, I would appreciate. And I can't stop seeing the pineapple.
I like the, the oak tree on the stone wall quite a bit. I like the upper right one better than the one beneath it. To me, you know, one of the iconic vistas in Wyndham, in various places, but I think of a spot on Larch Row near, I forget the address, but the Wilsons live down that street. I think it's their property, is, you know, an ancient stone wall that has three or four trees, and I don't know if they're oaks or what they are, but sort of against or in front of the stone wall. So I like that one a lot. Peter West in his commentary for the logos on the right points out, which I didn't notice until he pointed it out, that the branches inside the oak form a W, which I think is also kind of nice.
It's really hard to see.
Yeah, hard to see, subtle, but, and I like, I like the more subtle use of blue for water in that top right one. So I, to me, I think I really like that a lot, and I like it much more than really any of the other alternatives, and I want to give Peter West some credit, at least in my eyes, and I realize others might not like it, but he, you know, this is the third iteration of logos, and he, you know, really took our feedback. That particular motif was specific feedback that he received, and I think he did a nice job with that. So that's, that's my favorite, but beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
What's your take on the wording?
I like the font, actually. The, the taglines, you mean?
Yeah, so if you like the logo, what, what about the fonts?
Oh, the fonts. I like the font in the upper right one as well. I think it's a little bit more formal. I think it matches well with the, you know, with the logo itself, but, you know, I'm sure there are other fonts that might work well. I think the, the fonts on the, on the left-hand side are, are too informal for my taste.
There's a little curvature in that one, too, that I think is a little more attractive as opposed to just a line type setting.
Right, it's sort of.
It mimics the bottom of the tree.
Right, there you go. Right. And I like just the 1643, just sort of standing alone, I think is fine. I think that looks good. So anyway, that's my thoughts on the logos.
So I guess as far as the left side is concerned, I actually do like the sun better. The W looks odd to me, sort of perched up there. But I definitely prefer the right side, and I agree with Ben, the top right. I didn't get that that was a barn, I have to say, on the bottom right. I actually like the font on the lower right better than the upper, and I like the, well, Gary said it's not established, but anyway, the, either established or incorporated, to go with the data, to me, that's a little clearer what the date is doing there. But I would have to say the upper right is also my favorite.
Guess what? So do I.
Oh, yay.
And I like, I like the, the font on the upper right better than the, the one on the bottom right. It's, it's just, it doesn't have a sense of style. It's just kind of like somebody stamped it. Wyndham. Whereas the one on the upper right, I think it's more fitting with the, the tree above. I mean, just think, the upper right is just so simple. So what do you think? Upper right? Karen?
Yeah, I'm fine with the upper right.
All right. There we go. We don't have to vote on that, do we? No.
Do we?
Can we? Do we? Steve, do we vote on these?
Yeah, you gotta vote to select it, yeah.
All right, so I move that we select the.
Do we want to have anybody else chime in?
I really want to respond to that.
Kate has her hand up. Kate Mallory.
Yeah.
Kate.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak today. So I agree, I love the two on the right, so I'm really excited you guys are going for that top one on the right, but I was hoping we could just look at the colors real fast, thinking of the website. If, Michelle, if you go to slide six, can you do that? Option two, where it says, I don't think I'm seeing exactly what you guys are seeing there, but you can see the three colors, and it's brown, green, and blue. Are you guys seeing that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then if you go to the next one, it's got that royal dark blue, green, and light blue. I'm afraid if we keep that brown color in option two, that will be a lot of brown on the webpage, and so I'm wondering if you guys wanted to keep option two, but then incorporate that dark blue where the brown is. Just a suggestion, because I know the webpage will just have these three colors, so it's, there'll be a lot of brown on it.
I'm sorry, can you explain again what, what you want to do?
So.
Can you see what we're looking at?
Yes, so Peter, see how the left hand right here is a royal blue with the lime green and the light blue?
Okay.
So, Michelle, can you go up one?
That didn't look like. That didn't look like blue to me.
So that is a brown, opposed to a navy blue, or a dark royal blue. And so she's asking to switch it, because if we're using, if you're utilizing these as the only colors on the website, it's a lot of brown. And so she's asking, can we change it to a blue-based opposed to a brown-based?
Show me the next one, please.
So that's the blue, opposed to the brown. It's a very subtle difference, but when it's in writing, and if those are the colors that you're going to be highlighting and writing on a website, you're more apt to use a blue opposed to a brown. She's right.
So can I see... We're not looking at the one you're recommending.
We're looking at the blue color.
Yeah.
But go up, Michelle. And so it's this brown, the brown would change to that royal blue.
So Wenham, Wenham and this is brown, the stones are brown, the 1643 is brown. I know it's hard to tell, but they want to replace the brown with the dark blue, so it's...
The dark blue on the right?
No, this dark blue here.
Yeah. I think I'd want...
I'm sorry, I don't see dark blue on this.
Yeah, it's a little hard to tell. It's a very dark blue.
Yeah, it's hard to tell. It's really like...
It's very subtle on this.
It's going from a dark blue to a brown that clearly it's hard for your eyes to pick up on.
So as an ex-marketing guy, I would say piss-poor presentation, because I can't see... I'm not looking at the blue that you're talking about.
So at the end of the day, when you go to highlight something on the website, when you highlight it, or when you're to make it bold or italic, do you want it in blue, or do you want it in brown? And that's essentially...
And the answer is blue, but I wish I could see the blue.
Well, for one thing, the stone wall here certainly does not look blue to me. If it's supposed to be the same color as that blue, it looks brown to me, but I...
Hey, Kate?
Yes?
I think what we're saying is that blue is too dark.
Yeah, we could have him lighten the blue a shade and just maybe take out the brown. I just, I think brown's a tough color for a webpage.
So definitely agree on the brown. I think we're all in agreement on that. But can we have something that's not such a dark blue?
Well, yeah, we can. We'll have him do that rendition, but we'll also distribute a high-resolution image with that blue. Because I think we're losing some contrast or what the blue actually looks like on this projector.
Can we approve this as a logo with the amendment of later...
Yeah, because I think that's a good idea, and I can gather feedback individually from the board and, you know, make sure everyone's on the same page with the blues.
So are you good now, Kate?
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
All right, so let's go to...
Does anybody else have anything?
Anybody else? I passed. This is my third time.
Just checking.
All right, so let's go to taglines.
Do you want to move the logo first, or...
He said it's fine.
Yeah, move the logo, the selection. We'll do the blue offline.
Okay, so I move that... Could we put the... Michelle, could you put the logo back up? Option two, I believe it is. Right there, thank you. So I move that the Select Board adopt the option-two logo as the Town of Wenham's new logo, with the condition that some of the colors may be adjusted in a further revision of option-two.
Second. Okay, vote. Peter says yes.
Deirdre, yes. Karen, yes.
Ben, yes.
Gary, yes. All right, now we'll go to taglines. So I'll just tell you what I think. One and three toss all the rest. And the reason I like embracing history and nature, and then I also like the idea of where tradition meets tomorrow. Small town, big spaces, past, present, sustainable future, strengthened by history and nature. Rooted in history and nature is not as good as embracing history and nature. Tradition, community, tomorrow, preserve past, protect the future. Historically sown, community grown is corny. Nature, tradition, and nature, embracing history, welcome progress. So I like one and three the best. So, open to all kinds of criticism.
So how critical is it to get the tagline before, for the website?
I would say probably pretty critical, because I think that these... Like, the logo and the tagline is probably going to be woven throughout all our webpages. And to go back through, you know, the hundreds of pages that we have to reintegrate could be... Again, I'm not a developer, but they seem to really stress the importance of having this ready to go at this stage of the game before they start migrating and building out all the pages, which is the next step.
Unless we forego a tagline, I guess is also the other option.
I believe that's, yeah, totally within the boards.
I mean, I'm not in love with these. I actually suggested a town for all seasons because it ties a bit into the master plan. It's literal seasons, but in the master plan, we talk about Wenham being wonderful for all sort of seasons of life, whether it's early childhood, adulthood, raising kids, you know, your later years. So it's towards that, but a lot of these, to me, are just not catchy, unwieldy. They don't, like, grab you, so, you know. And that was the best I could come up with.
So you know what? The idea of not having a tagline is not a bad idea.
I agree with that. I was sort of wondering, too, whether we had to have a tagline. I'd be interested in Kate's thoughts about that as well. I... So I'd be fine with no tagline. If we were to do a tagline, I think I agree with you, Peter, that where tradition meets tomorrow maybe captures things the best, and it's got some zip to it, I guess. I like the notion of rooted because of the tree, but rooted in history and nature is a little bit too wordy, I think. If there were some other rooted phrase that I or someone else could think of, then that might be good because it, again, would align with the tree. But anyway, I would say no tagline or number three. And again, maybe once my colleagues speak, if Kate has a view on not having a tagline, I'd be interested in her thoughts, too.
Karen, Gary?
Well, I would scratch out any that have the commas, that stretch it out. And I do prefer one or three myself as well. But again, too, I'm not sure that, you know, we're not going to be a huge tourist town like Salem. And I think the emblem is the primary thing we're looking for, for signage and so forth. So if I can go with no tagline as well. It's something we could always add later anyhow, right?
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of the no-tagline. I don't think any of these really are wowed. I think a lot of it embodies a little bit more prejudice than we want to come across. I didn't see the seasons in my head. I was more thinking of, you know, the four. I would go with two if I had to choose one, knowing that the seasons would have embodied a lot more of the characteristics of not only a tree or leaves, but it comes... Yeah, I guess if I'm going to choose anything, I would choose two, but I'm not wowed. I'm more apt to say absolutely no tagline.
So should I make a motion to...
Well, let's hear what Kate does. Kate, I know that months ago, when we first started talking about this project, I was kind of fired up about having a tagline, but I now, and I think my peers here are thinking that we don't really need a tagline. How do you feel about that?
Yeah, I feel the same. I feel like we shouldn't force something if it's not perfect. And I think the logo is really going to look wonderful. The website's going to look wonderful. We don't have to put in anything that we don't need.
Okay. Great, well, we don't have to make a motion at all, right? Because we're not going to adopt a tagline.
Just a quick thank you to Kate for all of her work on this. I can't imagine how hard it is for us to request a tagline and to work really hard on one to have us say we don't want one. So Kate, thank you for that. Sorry.
Okay, so we have moved through C. Discussion and potential vote on Halloween trick-or-treat hours. What do you got?
Oh, we're talking about from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on October 31st, 2024.
Sorry, I thought there was a flyer. Yeah, that's all. Yeah, I thought there was a flyer, but evidently there's not one, so yeah, it's...
Do we have the time of sundown?
Well, that's still before daylight savings time changes.
Yeah.
So, and we've always used five to eight. It gets dark towards the end. So, but at the front end, there's still daylight, so younger kids can be out.
Yeah, I was just wondering what the...
Karen?
I can look it up.
If you didn't know, Porter Street is the street to go to.
Well, if you didn't know, I don't have trick-or-treaters, so I am going to go all over the place.
All right, so we make a motion?
Move to set the Halloween trick-or-treat hours from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on October 31st, 2024.
Second. Okay, we'll vote. Peter says yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes. All right. Discussion and potential vote on Larry Oak's request to fly the Christmas flag on the town flag pole as detailed in his email titled "Christmas Decorations," stated 9/25/24. So we do have a flag policy.
Do you want to ask? Does Larry want to speak?
Larry, you want to speak?
Oh, sure. I won't be lying. I thought I would explain where, how I even came with this, so... Because it's kind of interesting. Anyway, Larry Oak, 19 Longfellow Road in Wenham. Good evening, everybody. Oh, that's okay. I thought someone else was coming in on my invite. So anyway, my original thought, you know, because Christmas is coming, and that's what I said on the email. And I always loved Christmas. Some people love it, some people don't, you know, I understand. But that's everything these days, you know? You know, do that, yeah, but you can do... So it's pretty tough. So I kind of pushed myself, and I thought of a nativity scene, you know? And then I says, I can't ask them to buy it, you know, like a nice big one, you know? So I thought I would maybe buy it and donate it. But, you know, I couldn't, I don't have the room. They're huge. I don't want to give the DP, the highway guys, anything more to do than they already got. So those three things went out. But I remembered the time, what was last May, we had a discussion about flags when you voted for the policy. And so I went back and kind of went through that on the HW cam, and I came across a part where, actually, Ben described what the Supreme Court meant, so I understood it, you know? And typically, it was like Ben supports the town flag policy that includes flying Juneteenth and LGBT flags because it's fully consistent with the Supreme Court holding, contrary to comments that have been made, because it fits within a public viewpoint and government speech rule that the Supreme Court said. And because Ben thinks those are appropriate things for the town to celebrate as a town entity, he doesn't see it as a lifestyle issue, because these things were brought up in the course of the comments. And so he was addressing all of them. And sees it as honoring a holiday, which caught my ear that night. That's in one case, and honoring a public proclamation of Pride Month, which is also in the view of a positive step forward for the community. So it's hard to argue. So, and I'm not blaming you, Ben, but that's when I thought of the Christmas flag, only because it was so inclusive in a very un-inclusive time that we seem to be living in. So the other thing that lined up, I kind of, you know, is Pride Month is in June, and the flags that, you know, were asked to go up. Well, six months later, wouldn't you know, December comes. And when I was growing up, December was always the Christmas season. I know it starts in October, now even June, but it was always December. And Christmas, of course, was in December. So I thought of getting a nativity flag to fly during the month of December, including Christmas Day, and with a nativity scene and Merry Christmas across it. Of course, the nativity scene did depict Jesus Christ, and the Merry Christmas to be a secular. And I did look up, I'm learning from you guys, girls. I did look up if there was any, ever a judgment on this. And there is one, and I'm not saying that that's, hey, this is why you got to do it now, because... I'm not saying that. I'm saying that I found this thing that said religious displays... Well, it was the case of Lynch versus Donnelly. United States Supreme Court ruled the religious displays may indeed be part of Christmas... No, religious displays, and I'm not even coming from a religious aspect. I just happen to like Christmas, and I happen to like Jesus Christ. So I don't really think he's religious, but that's just me. Religious displays may indeed be a part of Christmas displays on government property. Few residents challenged that, but the Supreme Court came back five to four. The Supreme Court rejected the challenge, ruling that religious display on public property does not violate the Constitution because the display also serves a secular purpose, which made me think right away with what you said that night. I'm probably not exactly right, but it was tied to a holiday, and it was also a Pride Month that was a public statement that everybody could get behind. That's why I came up with this. That's the truth. You probably won't believe me, but that's the truth. And so my request to fly a nativity flag saying Merry Christmas during the month of December was to mirror flying the Pride and Juneteenth flag during the month of June. And maybe the two shall meet. Let's move forward. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
See if anyone, anyone have their hand up at home. No hands on there.
Discussion, folks?
I'll comment since Mr. Oak mentioned me. First of all, I want to thank you for putting the proposal forward. And I think whether it's a proposal like this or correspondence that any citizen sends to us, we, you know, try, I think, across the board to treat all of those requests with respect and consideration. And I think it's great that any citizen, you know, puts forward a policy proposal of this type or anything that affects the citizens of Wenham. When we adopted the flag policy, and again, I'm not saying that I'm right or wrong or an expert in any of this, but the distinction that I think we tried to draw when we adopted the flag policy, which comes out of that shirtless decision from the Supreme Court of a couple of years ago involving the city of Boston, was whether or not the town flag would be used as a forum for private expression versus official town speech. And what we decided to adopt, and it's, you know, one of the bullet points in the flag policy, among the allowance, obviously, of flying the American flag and the state flag, the town flag, and the POW flag, as well as the service branch flags, was flags related to official governmental proclamations approved by the Select Board. And then we included the Pride flags and the Juneteenth flags. Those, at least in my thinking, and I think this was the board's general thrust in adopting the policy, those all fall within government speech. They happen to be, the two examples in question, happen to be tied to particular governmental proclamations, with June being Pride Month and Juneteenth being a federal holiday. On the other side, you have private expression. And at least in my thinking, Mr. Oak, and again, I appreciate your, you know, your thought and your analysis that you've put forward, and I also would add that I'm, like you, a huge fan of Christmas. But Christmas, even though it may be something that, let's say, 80% of the population celebrates, it's still a... it's still a religious holiday that represents one particular, specific religion. And we all know there are other religions and practitioners of those religions that don't celebrate Christmas. So to fly the Christmas flag on the town flag poll, in my view, would be a private expression that both is inconsistent with the policy that we adopted, and in, you know, reading some of the case law, not just the shirtless case, but another case that came down a few years ago from the Supreme Court, would not be constitutional, in my view. Again, it's just one view. You could talk to other lawyers or citizens who have a different view. But I think that for those reasons, it would not be appropriate to, to fly the Christmas flag. That's one member's take on it, anyway.
I think too that our discussion back when we adopted the policy was to avoid situations where we became competitive with outside groups trying to access the flag poll. And the flag policy, as it states now, is we listed those that fall under government speech only. So I'd like to stay to that, continuing that policy that says, no, we're not going to entertain other requests outside of government speech to have access to the flag poll.
I agree with what Ben and Gary have already said, though I would like to thank Larry for the spirit in which you've brought this forward and looking to be inclusive and celebratory. So we do appreciate that. I have given some thought to try to figure out how to find funding to do lights in town. I think that would be a nice holiday celebration. So maybe we can talk.
I am in full support of the lights, so we can start there. I'm also a very big fan of Christmas at our house, so that is also, I fully support that as well. I took a little bit of a different approach, and I have been very vocal about the flag policy. While I agree with 90% of it, I didn't at the time, and still stand by, I don't necessarily agree that we are approving the Pride flag specifically only. I think at the time, and I stand by this today, there are five other additional federally approved flags that are inclusive, that should also be up for discussion. I had reached out to the Human Rights Coalition to talk about the potential of bringing forth an indigenous flag to be, to be flown on town property during Indigenous Day, which is next week. We are going to table that until next year, but there is a fully federally approved flag at that time that we should take a look at. So I am in full support of continuously changing our flag policy based on, on events as they come up. And I appreciate that we will continuously add this to the agenda as other flags should be reviewed. But as of right now, I am not sure that this, that the, that this Christmas flag is, is necessarily the, on top of the list before the other federally funded and approved flags. But I'm in full support of finding a different way for the town to be able to, to celebrate.
All right, so we're all saying no? Oh, sorry.
Hey, everyone. Jeff Austin, 50 Sharon Road, Hamilton. I'm just a little confused of how we make an exception for some special interest groups, but not the Christmas flag. Help me understand that, because you made a distinction that Christmas could be celebrated by a certain religion that's 80% maybe or so, plus or minus. But you have an exception for some particular special interest groups. So I'm confused on how that distinction is made.
I don't think.
How you draw the line.
I don't think it's exceptions. It's we've selected to adopt government speech for those flags that are supported at the federal and state level.
You know, Christmas is a federal holiday, right?
A holiday.
Acknowledged by the federal government, closed on the federal government, right? So help me, help me rationalize this.
I think the difference is that there is, although there's holidays recognized by the federal government, that the town of Wyndham has designated certain flags to fall under our view of government speech. And in my opinion, that we should not, you know, accept or consider others that represent private groups coming in to access the flag.
Christmas is a private group?
Well, yes, in, in the religious sense, yes.
I think Larry's point was, this is not Christian. This is, he enjoys the holiday.
Well, that's, that was part of his presentation. The other part was putting the Jesus Christ on the flag.
He said he also enjoys Jesus Christ, but he made a distinction that this flag.
Do you have a solution?
Yeah, it's a federal holiday. It's a, it's a federal acknowledged holiday. I would allow a Christmas, a flag. If you're going to make a distinction of what you allow and what you don't allow, it's either you allow all special interest groups or everything, everything outside of the local government, or none. It's not pick and choose, right? It shouldn't be pick and choose. I'll put it that way.
Well, there was no federal Christmas flag.
Okay, that's, that's two minutes.
Yep.
I'm sorry. And the only other thing I would say, so are we going to recognize Hanukkah?
Again.
Are we going to recognize?
All or none. Not you just to get to pick what you.
We, we are not going to engage in debate. You've made your comment. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Courtney, I think it's your turn.
So I just wanted to add, I don't mean to drag this, this is getting a little tough for you guys, so sorry. But Christmas is a federal holiday that everybody is paid for. They get a paid holiday to stay home and celebrate with their families for over 150 years now. So the reason you're getting paid to stay home is because Jesus Christ was born. That's really all this request is about. That's it. He's the man. He's the reason we celebrate the day. That's it. There's nothing else to it. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Erin Crowley, 11 Appaloosa Lane. I love Santa. I love Christmas. I love everything about it. I just want to say I agree with the decision that you came to. I don't need the town to be flying a flag. I think you've done your due diligence. We need to respect the separation of church and state at all levels of government. So I appreciate the decision that you made.
Hi, I'm Martha Brennan, 11 Daniels Road. Also just want to mention that the, it is a establishment clause of the Constitution that says that no town entity should be putting one religion before another. And whether or not it's a paid holiday, it's a religious holiday. And that should not be part of our flag policy. I think the policy that you adopted was the appropriate one. And I think it's a constitutional question, which Ben has outlined. And there's really, it doesn't matter what the holiday is, it's a religious holiday, so.
I just need to answer now.
I think there's, the rule is just one time speaking?
Yeah.
No, I'm just going to go home. But I just wanted to say that I did cite a Supreme Court. It seems that everybody's kind of forgetting about that. That said, there's nothing wrong with a religious display of public property, doesn't violate the Constitution because the display also served a secular purpose. That's all. I was trying to be inclusive and break some walls down. I didn't mean to get anybody mad, but now I find myself getting agitated, because I'm not trying to, just, Christmas is a good thing.
Nobody's getting mad.
No, people are coming up and going, you know, it's not my religion, it's your religion. It's not, I'm not even, I've said enough. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
Larry, I'd like to propose that, that you, we have a conversation regarding lights and regarding a town holiday, and that you be included in that.
If you'd like.
If you'd like.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I think I'll just keep it closed. I appreciate it, though.
So, anyone else? All right, so I'm going to make a motion. I move to deny Mr. Oak's September 25th, 2024 request to fly a Christmas flag on the town of Wyndham flag poll pursuant to the board's flag policy adopted by this board on May 21st, 2024.
Second.
Discussion? All right, then.
No, my question was, is this, is this a vote? Do you have to vote? There's an open discussion. I mean, do we have to vote on it? Aren't we just applying our policy? Do you have to have my motion to vote for it?
I was advised that we should take a vote.
That's fine. That's, that was my question.
Okay, so Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
We do appreciate where you're coming from. We really do. All right. Discussion on email from Natalie Bowers, titles, "I support 3A," and I hope you do too, dated 10/1/2024. Natalie here, or, okay.
Hi, Select Board. Thanks for making time for this on the agenda today. I just want to start by saying, I know that this is a big issue for everyone. We've been talking about it. There's been a lot of attendance in municipal meetings. I can see that people have real concerns over their taxes, over the character of the town, over amenities like water, sewer, density, traffic, et cetera. And in this sense, we're the same. We, I have the same concerns. I don't want higher taxes. I don't want crazy density. I don't want to turn a bucolic town into a city. So there's really no difference between us here. But the problem is, through my own journey of learning about this issue and talking with state officials and looking and speaking with housing officials in the state and reading, it's so boring, this stuff. That's why I'm not a housing professional. Reports like this, where they've looked at housing and the impact on multifamily housing over 10, 20 years, the reality is, there are way more benefits than there are detriments to adopting the 3A zoning overlay. Lower taxes, more people equals less taxes, okay? This is not going to turn our town into a city. Well, nobody's talking about putting a tenement on 1A. Walkable communities. Our own Council on Aging is talking about dementia-friendly. I mean, Jim Reynolds, forever, as long as I've known the guy, is like, we've got to make this walkable. None of this should be scary. This is not anything we should be scared of. We do have an opportunity to rectify the moral obligation of abandoning our longstanding commitment to exclusionary zoning. So really, allowing for multifamily housing by passing 3A is not just the right thing to do. I really believe it's the smart thing to do. I don't think this voice has been in this space, so I thank you for letting me be here today. I don't think I'm alone. I actually think that if people really look at this, this is going to be the majority voice. And I just hope that between now and April, we can all do due diligence, and you all can take the lead to help really clarify correct factual information from misinformation, because people are scared. They're, they're very scared. Lastly, thank you for providing me space on the agenda, which was admittedly a big surprise to me. I would suggest that maybe we consider not automatically placing citizens' letters on the agenda. It can be very intimidating. I was like, what? I'm on the agenda! So I feel really nervous to be here, but the truth is, maybe we might be intimidating other people who want, might otherwise share their opinion with you if they feel like they're going to be called out. But anyway, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I, that's an interesting point.
Yes.
Really is. Thank you for that final point. We need to talk about that. Probably. Okay. Thank you, Natalie.
Does anybody have a comment?
Anybody else want to comment?
I'm Debbie Amenzaday, 10 Onion River Road, and I am a Realtor. So speaking from sort of my industry background, I just want to say that, you know, I echo Natalie's mentioning of all these things that people are concerned about. I too am concerned about all that, traffic and water and all these things. However, you know, we just, we can't put our heads in the sand about the lack of inventory, the lack of housing out there. And keeping, I am asking residents, sorry, I'm very nervous. I'm asking residents, think about your own families. Think about your grandmother that's living in a Cape home here that's underwater and maybe needs an apartment to move to, but wants to stay in the town. Think about your kids, your grandkids, that want to come back to Hamilton and live here and raise their families. What we have right now is a logjam. We have people in four-bedroom homes that are empty nesters that aren't moving. We have older people that want to stay in the town that don't have a place, you know, to move to or maybe can't afford to move to some of these 55-plus, you know, communities. And maybe, you know, maybe a multifamily or a, you know, some other model would be a good option for them. So it's not just about, oh, all these people are going to come into town and all these other sort of undercurrents of our town's going to change. It also is, in addition, taking care of our own residents and our own residents' needs and family needs over the future about increasing our housing. Still with the guise of, you know, conservation and planning board and all of these restrictions on housing and where this house is going to be placed. And a good example is Maple Woods. Maple Woods came in, you know, 65 gorgeous units. People, many, many people, most people, didn't come from Wyndham. And there they are, living their wonderful life, way up on a hill, hasn't impacted our traffic or all these things that people think about and are nervous about. So just kind of putting a reality in the real estate world. And, you know, every town has to sort of pitch in here, not only for the good of people that need these housing and the rents that are sky-high and the, and the bidding wars that just keep going up and up because there's just not enough houses. But also just think about your own families and wanting to, you know, meet their needs when they want to come back and enjoy what we enjoy today in Hamilton or Wyndham. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody online?
Just going to say thank you to Natalie for writing and bringing a different lens to this discussion. I found it to be very useful, and I appreciate that. And thank you, Debbie, for speaking from your professional lens as well. That's also, excuse me, very helpful.
All righty, so we're going to move on to G. Discussion on email from Courtney Ashwood, titled "Thoughts/Questions on Last Night's Select Board Meeting, Dated 9/25/2024."
Oh, God. Idiots, I know. Okay. So I'll just keep my comments pretty short. In terms of diverse housing, I did want to, you know, bring up the fact that we do have some going up in town. There's 45 units, on my understanding, on Asbury Street development that's going to be going in, and the sale of Gordon Conwell, which is just over 200 apartments that are going to be converted to not just the Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary residence, but it's going to be opened up to general residence as well. So I don't know what the breakout is of that, how many are already filled and how many would open up for more people to move in. But those developments are in play. And then I don't know if everybody watched the Supreme Court. It was so interesting. I actually thoroughly enjoyed it. But, you know, if it does come out that the Attorney General does not have the right to enforce the guidelines, if the guidelines go away and it goes back to that three-paragraph statute, then the only issue with noncompliance is we wouldn't get grant funding for money we don't get anyways. And, you know, the size and scope of the zoning for 3A is large for these two towns. It is. And not only that, but it gives the EO HLC governing authority for the 3A district. So I just wanted to bring up those points in relation to the email I sent. Thank you.
Comments?
Yes. I wanted to also just make a few comments, since 3A is on the agenda, about the Supreme Judicial Court arguments yesterday in the Milton case that Ms. Ashwood referenced. I watched that as well, and I think there may be, you know, several people in the room who, who did. And, you know, I would preface my remarks by saying that you never know what a court is going to decide, and it would be dangerous to predict what the Supreme Judicial Court is going to decide. However, the AG's position got a pretty However, the AG's position got a pretty rough reception at the SJC yesterday. And because there are only six justices out of seven who are presiding over this particular case, the seventh justice recused herself because she had worked in the administration prior to taking the bench. The Attorney General is going to need four votes to win. And what the Attorney General has sought to do is to enforce the guidelines and the statute against Milton and to get injunctive relief and declaratory relief from the court to be able to force Milton to comply. And there were at least three justices during oral arguments who seemed very skeptical of elements of the statute and the guidelines. As Ms. Ashwood just said, one of the issues that came up is whether there should be a general enforcement authority given to the Attorney General. In other words, just basically say, you know, you, Town of Milton, Town of Wenham, Town of Hamilton, whoever, you must comply with this and we can take you to court if you don't versus the legislature specifying the four different grant programs that towns that aren't in compliance would be ineligible for. And the SJC is going to decide, among other things, whether it's just those four grant programs that are the exclusive penalties for noncompliance. If they decide that, that changes the analysis, I think, for a lot of cities and towns. And there are other outcomes that obviously could happen. It could be that everything is just upheld the way it is and where, you know, sort of status quo in place. Another issue that came up is whether the guidelines were promulgated properly or whether they should have been issued as formal regulations which required certain steps that weren't taken like small business impact and more formal notice and hearing requirements. If, for example, the SJC were to say, well, we're fine with everything except for that, then it could be that two years from now, we have the same guidelines back but as regulations. So it's difficult to say, obviously, what the SJC is going to do. But I do think in listening to the arguments yesterday that it validates the decision that we made as a board unanimously a couple of weeks ago to put off the special town meeting on the rezoning proposal under 3A until we can see, you know, what the state of the law will be coming out of this decision. And so, you know, I think that we'll wait. We'll wait probably until February to see what happens and then it could be an entirely different landscape. I also just wanted to echo what Deirdre said with respect to Ms. Bowers' comments. And I'm sorry, I don't recall your name, but the citizen that spoke with real estate background. And I think those are really good perspectives for everybody to hear because I think we, in this 3A debate, we hear a lot of the same comments that are really rooted in self-interest, which there's nothing wrong with self-interest. You know, we have to balance a lot of different things as a board. One of those things is the self-interest of particular property owners with respect to their taxes, what they perceive as the impacts on their particular property. But there's a lot of other equities that we should take into account in this debate. Part of it is frankly dealing with trying to provide more diverse housing and more housing opportunities for people that have not had a fair shake to get into housing in the suburbs. And so, you know, one of the questions I think we need to ask ourselves when we turn back to whether it's 3A or some other rezoning proposal that maybe the planning board is able to do without this proverbial gun to the head of 3A, are those kinds of questions? Is there a value to the Town of Wenham sort of doing its part to help create more housing versus sort of an attitude of, you know, preventing as many people from coming in as possible and just a pure sort of fiscal outlook? And I think that those are the kinds of things that should be part of a balancing analysis. And I hope that that will be the case when we, you know, get back to this issue under 3A or some other iteration.
Gary?
Yes, I think we should also remind ourselves that the alternative housing solutions was one of the main things that came out of the master plan. We see that we have, as previously said, we have single-family retirees that are essentially stuck in a large house that don't have alternatives to remain in Wenham and therefore they're reluctant to leave the house, which means there's no room for other families to move in. Secondly, and I think Steve will concur with this, that we are continuing to have the answers and questions on the town website where you can go and get the actual factual information as opposed to kind of the one-sided, opinionated or extremist things that came out on the flyers through the mail. And I also think that, you know, Wenham has always had two different ideas here of, well, we don't want to change too much, but Wenham has always been open to change. And certainly at different times, we've had people who resisted townhomes in Wenham, though we have them now, that have resisted affordable housing that we now have in town. And they've all come to benefit the town as a whole. So I see this as a broadening of our housing base. And I think as we decided two weeks ago, that once we have the court decisions, it'll be much more clearer as to where we stand. But as a practical matter, I see that, you know, there is a need throughout Massachusetts as well as in the town of Wenham for some different housing options for the folks. And this is one possible solution.
So I want to thank Courtney for writing. Courtney, because you always make us think and you certainly keep us on our toes. So I appreciate your diligence in really looking at this. Just a couple of points on the things you mentioned. The housing, the Gordon Conwell and Asbury Street, I think those are in Hamilton. Just to be clear for everyone, those are in Hamilton. So they won't actually have any impact on our Wenham tax base here. My understanding is that we do actually get some of grant money that is on the list. I mean, I don't think it's tremendous amounts, but we do in fact have some. Is that correct?
Margaret, yes, and there are a couple.
Margaret, compiled.
Yeah, I think a couple we've gotten in the past and
It's not much.
And some of our hesitation forward, and I think the Milton case will, you know, will shed some light on this, was how much the state will or can weigh your participation in this program for other grants. So it's been kind of the rumor that they were going to, you know, carry it forward to all their grant programs. And if you were in violation of any legislature, then it'd be counted against you. So I guess that's all to say. Wait and see.
Right, so we'll see the outcome. I just, my understanding is that our grant funding from those sources is not zero. That's basically my point. And I also would not like to lock us out of future grants given all the fiscal constraints that we're going to be facing in the future. But discussion for a later time, once that's all decided. I also want to mention, because I know one of the things that people have talked about is the concern over increase in school enrollments. And I just want to mention that there is a report, which I found recently and have been reading through, and it's from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and it is a research brief. And it is called "The Waning Influence of Housing Production on Public School Enrollment." So they actually did a study and people can look this up for themselves and read the analysis and look at their methodology. But what they found, they say, "We find no significant association between the change in housing unit development and the change in school enrollment at the district level during this period. And this lack of relationship holds at the community type level too. We still see no clear association between development and enrollment when looking at clusters of similar suburban or urban municipalities." So I think that's pertinent to this discussion because I've heard that mentioned very frequently. And again, you can look at their methodology and their data, but there are other factors at work in the state that they're attributing the fluctuations in school enrollment and that they have not found an association with housing production and major or any fluctuations in school enrollment. So I just want to put that out there.
So I want to thank both Natalie and Courtney for putting these emails together. The one takeaway that I have more than anything is the understanding that as a select board, we need to do a phenomenal job with educating our community as to what the actual facts are and to how this would not only impact from a grant perspective, from a school perspective, from a tax perspective, and really take the option of putting together a frequently asked questions or if we have a night that people can truly have an open session, ask questions. I do believe there's a lot of information out there that is inaccurate, which is proven by some of these mailers and emails that we get. And if there's a way that we can try to combat and try to educate as much as possible prior to any further voting, I think that that would be essential.
Good discussion. There was a lot.
Couple members of the public, I think, that want to speak.
Okay, please.
Erin Crowley, 1 Appaloosa. I just want to speak in support of 3A as well. And I am by no means a lawyer, but I do know that this legislation was passed with bipartisan support from the legislature. It was first signed into law by Governor Baker. It's now being put into regulation by Governor Healy. I don't think this is going away. I think that if the SJC decision comes back with modifications, that might happen, but I don't think the spirit of this law is going away. We have a major, major housing crisis in Massachusetts. The legislature recognized this as one solution to address it. I am frustrated that when we look at all these other communities that are moving forward with plans, and I think there was a huge Boston Globe article just last week naming all of those communities and celebrating them, that we're sort of putting our heads in the sand. I think we have incredibly smart, thoughtful people in both the communities of Hamilton and Wenham. And I would encourage us to start planning now because I agree that the concerns people have raised around water and the aesthetics of the buildings, those are all real and valid. And I think we're better off taking the time to start putting a plan together now rather than just sitting on our heels and waiting. And I am discouraged by the conversation of what are the repercussions of not being in compliance with the state law. I don't think we should be having that conversation. I think as a local community, we should be focused on how are we complying with a state law that was put into place to address a statewide housing crisis, including here in our community.
Just for what it's worth, the planning board has delivered a compliant plan. We just haven't submitted it.
Okay, yeah.
Can I add one other thing? I think it's similar to the clarification that Deirdre made with respect to the Hamilton projects. So, and I know Appaloosa Lane, I think, is in Hamilton and we obviously are very happy to have Hamilton residents here. But it's, I think, if you read, first of all, if you read the Select Board's letter that we sent to the state, which is on the Town of Wenham website, it explains pretty comprehensively our thought process behind delaying our vote on this. And I think you can't come away from that letter and draw the conclusion that this board or this town is hostile to the interests of 3A. We tried to be pretty neutral about it. And I think it's also important to point out, as the chairman just alluded to, that the Wenham Planning Board worked on this for two-plus years, came up with a plan that is compliant with 3A. And we currently are in compliance with all of the benchmarks that have been set forth. And the Town of Hamilton can't say the same, so.
Yeah, and I totally, I wasn't meant to be accusatory or attacking. I just, I appreciate your great work and I know this is complex. There's no question about it. I just, I want to see our community as part of that positive news of these are communities that are moving forward to be a part of solving the crisis of housing here in our state and our country. So thank you for your incredible work. I know it's not easy.
Thank you.
Jeff Austin, 50 Sharon Road, Hamilton, Mass. Speaking on behalf of myself, just a few clarifying questions that I really don't answer too, but I want to mention them. The real estate lady said that more people equals more taxes. These are rental units, I believe. They don't pay the same taxes that a homeowner would pay. So it doesn't equate the same. Secondly, I think Benjamin, you said that not complying with it would be preventing people from coming in. It was common about preventing. Nobody's preventing anybody from coming in. I think some people that are concerned about 3A are not necessarily concerned about growth. It's managed growth, something we can manage over time, not a huge influx all at one time, which it seems to be. So that seems to be a concern. And I'll have to look into Deirdre, the article, if you can share that somewhere online. Because the math doesn't add up to me. If you add in, I'm not sure Wenham's number, 356, I think. If you add in 356 units that are not subject to sizing of how many bedrooms or size, two adults, most likely a child, at least let's say one, that's 350 children added, potentially. Some units have more children, some have less. So I don't understand how that, it balances out in children. That's another 300, 200 children. It's got to be taken up somewhere. I think we figured out it's like 20,000 per child to educate them in our school system. It's a lot of money. So I'll have to look up that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there's a hand raised.
Natalie, online?
Natalie, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Natalie Hildreth, 121 Linden Street. I'm also a Hamilton resident, just tuning in to see what Wenham's doing about 3A. And I super appreciate that you guys actually have come up with a well-thought-out plan, even if it's in unbuildable territory in Wenham. But I would just like to pose a question to the Select Board and the group there. I'm curious, when somebody buys a single-family house in Wenham, do you ask how many children live in that house? Or does it only apply to multifamily housing, apartments, rentals? I just, I find this rhetoric to be really discouraging, classist, racist, and gross. And I hope that you can see beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Anybody else?
So I'm just going to make another comment. So I'll just reiterate, the report that I'm referencing is from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And we should be able to get a link up in our frequently asked questions. But there's something that I think Mr. Austin mentioned, something about people coming into the state. I think one of the articles that I remember reading throughout this process over the last couple of months talked about the lack of housing options for our younger workforce. And that's people without two incomes probably and that the state is actually losing that segment of the workforce because people can't afford to buy housing in Massachusetts and there is basically insufficient inventory for them to be able to house. And that then becomes a problem for us economically in the state and keeping us vital and vibrant and so forth and progressing. So I just want to make that point also. There is a necessity in the state economically for us to be able to house workers and keep particularly that demographic in places where they can actually afford to live.
Can I respond to that?
No, hon. I think we're done.
Can I respond to that?
It's up to him.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item I. Discussion on Select Board Member Karen Anger's request to discuss the handling of the distribution of the letter titled, Postponement of Wenham's November 2024 Special Town Meeting.
So that's me. I had submitted a letter to Steve and copied Ben for the reasoning of during the September 24th Select Board meeting, there was a letter that was proposed and written regarding the town meeting that was written by Deirdre and Ben. At that point, the letter itself had not been submitted from an open-meeting law perspective, could not have been sent to the Select Board members at that time. However, the Select Board members who were not a part of writing the letter did not have a chance to fully review it and really intake the information. I was on the phone. I was not sent the letter, so I could not read it. I could not see it. At that point, the letter was then moved to an open discussion and a vote taken on the letter. My email to Steve and to Ben was to state that I was uncomfortable with not only the letter being put up on the screen without our team, our board, being able to process it, but also then our team, our board, being able to process it, but also then to rush into a decision based on the letter. I would like to put forth a request that if a letter, from an open-meeting law perspective, is not allowed to be sent to us prior, and it has to be distributed and put up on screen, that going forward, we do not have a vote same day. It does allow us to be able to take a step back to review it and then be able to set it up at the next meeting.
I'm all right with that.
I was on the phone. I couldn't see anything. I was uncomfortable with the fact that the Town Administrator's Office didn't email it to me, so I was unaware as to not only what was being discussed. And at that point, votes could have been changed based on my ability to be able to see that letter. And that was the uncomfortable part of that.
So, I think the open-meeting law issue was that, excuse me, it would have been an open-meeting law violation for a quorum of the Select Board to see the draft before the public did. So, I think that, so I think it was appropriate that it wasn't circulated by the Town Administrator to any board members prior to the public meeting. But I think you raise a good point with respect to having sufficient time for board members to review things. And this was an important letter, and, you know, it was several pages long. And so, I think that you raise a good point. I think that the solution, but I-
Well, in this instance, it was passed out to everybody, and I was not sent it. So, being on the phone specifically for this, and I understand the passion behind this letter, and I understand the passion behind the vote and the need to move forward, and I fully respect that.
Right.
The board and the town were well aware that I was going to be out, so there could have been sufficient information sent to me, even as we were moving. It could have been acknowledged, so.
Well, I think, I mean, again, I think that, I think that it couldn't have been circulated to anybody in any form prior to the public meeting without violating the OML. But I think that a solution might be, and I've seen other towns do this, that the Select Board packet could be posted alongside the agenda online. And in this particular instance, the packet might have included the draft letter. I think that the timing was such this last time that it might have been tight to do that, you know? But if that can be done, and if that passes OML muster, that's one solution, that the Select Board meeting packet is made public at the same time it's provided to the Select Board members. And that would be a way to, I think, to address your point. Gary?
So, I think a couple of solutions that might be used is either to, in a circumstance where we do have a letter, to allocate a short reading period at the beginning of the meeting in the agenda, or set up a process where if we're going to have the remote capability, and I think in the past, you know, the remote was considered as a phone call, old technology. But clearly today, we can enhance that a little bit by either having a remote in Zoom or the remote having email access at the same time, so that a letter that is distributed at the beginning of the meeting could be also distributed to the remote participants.
Which was my request.
So, I think, either way, it's just a little administrative fix that we can fix this.
What about the posting of the packet? Is that something that's been-
Yeah, my, Lauren, we've talked about this with Lauren a couple of times from things in the past, and her interpretation is that it needs to be shared. You can't put it up on the public. You can put it up on the website at the same time the board is viewing the letter. So, it's like, we can't put it up ahead of time. And, you know, she also suggested a reading period, but similar, Ben read the letter to everybody aloud. You know, I guess, I certainly could, you know, learn from this in the future if a Select Board member is going to be absent to coordinate, to send an email, you know, simultaneously with the discussion, so that they can receive the letter virtually.
There's also an aspect here of I had sent an email directly to Steve and to Ben only regarding this, asking this to be placed on the agenda, and then that email was then forwarded to the entire board, which I also don't find acceptable. That was something that doesn't, just because I'm asking for something to be put on the agenda, and almost to reiterate a lot of what Natalie is saying, just because you ask for something to be discussed amongst the Select Board, doesn't necessarily mean that you need to put the entire emails directly up there. And so, I'm more than happy to send emails to anybody. That's not, that's not a question. But I do think that there needs to be a sensitivity regarding the emails that are distributed to the entire board as well as posted.
So, a little bit back to the other question about the letters being fully published. My understanding is that, you know, communications to the Select Board are subject to the open-meeting law.
In this instance, the email went to Ben only.
But it was on a government-
Still, I mean, it's still-
So, we get into very detailed nuances here. But I think the important point here is to make sure that in all circumstances, we comply with OML. And then within those limitations, we come up with a administrative process that addresses the question at hand here. And I think that can be done either by a reading period or by the email setup so we can move on.
Not to, you know, belabor too much, but I mean, I think, to Gary's point, any document that any of us produces, regardless of whether it's sent to one or multiple board members as a public record, so it's disclosable. I don't really have a view on whether or not your email should have been included in the first circulation of the packet. I do feel like there was no, certainly no ill intent on the part of the administration.
Also not a secret email. You're more than welcome to see it. I mean-
Right, yeah. So, I don't, right.
Send it out to everybody.
Right. And just express your position on this issue. So, there's nothing, there can be nothing confidential, you know, about any Select Board's email unless it's, you know, falls under some executive session issue, which this wouldn't. But just back to the packet thing, I don't want to belabor that either. But it sounds like Lauren Goldberg's advice would be, but I'd be interested to see if she confirms this, that when Michelle, typically on the Thursday before our Select Board meeting, circulates the packet to the Select Board, that if she took the additional step of posting it on the website, the calendar, you know, so you have the agenda and then the packet, which I, again, I know a lot of towns do, that that would be OML compliant, I believe, because we'd be getting it at the same time that it becomes publicly available. But if, I'd be interested to hear whether that's Town Council's view. And if it is, I think, to me, that would, I think, address Karen's overall point, which I, you know, think has merit. I don't know if other board members agree that that would be one way to approach it, but I think it would be a good way to approach it.
In this case, when we had both Natalie and Courtney come up and say that they were unaware of what was going to be on the agenda, I think a lot of having that packet be available to the public would allow people to be able to weigh in and to put together the thoughts.
And the public is, the packet is available to the public before the meeting.
You mean if they were to come in and-
No, it goes up at what time? Like, 2:00?
12:00.
Tuesday at 2:00.
Right.
But it's not posted on Friday, when we get it, or Thursday.
Well, right. I mean, it's not ready then. So, you guys get our, what we have. We strive to have it ready on Thursday night, but it's not, generally not ready for public consumption. At that point, it's more of a convenience to give you more time to review the materials that we compile and finalize for public posting on Tuesday. And this, you know, this is the policy that the board voted and approved probably 18 months ago, that this is how they wanted the packet to be handled and posted. And we certainly can bring the policy back and have it amended, but we're just following what the board's wishes were at that point in time. And I will certainly get clarity from Lauren. My understanding is that it can't be distributed outside of the meeting, and that the first viewing has to be by all parties during the conduct of the meeting. However, I will get clarity on that. And if we can share it ahead of time, I'm more than happy to share it ahead of time.
Because the updating of agendas, at least in practice, not even so much in Wenham, but I know in other towns, that the amending and updating of meeting agendas in practice does not have to meet the 48-hour rule. There seems to be, I mean, I know of many instances where there'll be, again, not here, but just in my day job, where there'll be an original agenda for a meeting that was noticed and posted within the 48 hours, but then unless, you know, within, closer in time to the meeting, that there are updated agendas. So, it seems like that passes muster. And if so, an updated packet might too. But anyway.
Yeah. I mean, I would think Lauren would probably say they're being a little lax, and her interpretation would be that if the only changes to the agenda can be clerical in nature, do a misspelling, or things that were unreasonably anticipated by the chair. But if, you know, you're updating information because you simply forgot to put information that you knew or had agenda items that you were aware of, and, no, you can't amend the agenda for that reason. However, it's not an open-meeting violation unless you're called on it. So, a lot of communities do kind of operate by some flexible rules. And, you know, again, if that's the board's wish to be more flexible, I know KP Law is, you know, very conservative in, you know, protection of liability of the town and open-meeting rest, but we can certainly, you know, push the limits, probably not the right term, but to be more lax in our flexibility, just understanding that if we were challenged, you know, KP Law may have a different take when they send the complaint to the Attorney General's office.
All righty.
Peter, what's your take?
I'd like to be a little more lax. Are we done?
One more.
Right. Okay. So, Jay, strategy discussion with Energy Systems Group, ESG, for the Green Communities Decarbonization Grant for Town Hall HVAC.
All right. So, about, I believe it was six weeks ago, came before the Select Board saying, you know, we're going to move forward, and it's going to be basically a sprint to the finish to get to October 18th, which is another deadline, not just the logo, but it's the deadline for the decarbonization grant for the Town Hall HVAC and the electrification. So, back then, we, the Select Board gave us the authority to move forward, and we issued an RFP, and ended up contracting with Energy Systems Group. So, we have Bill and his team member, Christian, and they've worked with Vicky Mison closely. And, you know, so we're at the, we're at, they've done, you know, a massive amount of work over the last few weeks and have what we believe to be a pretty competitive plan to submit to the decarbonization grant. However, there's some requests for the Select Board to give us some guidance on. So, I'll let Bill take over and kind of walk you through the process and kind of what he's thinking to position us in a competitive position in this competitive grant, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Steve. Bill Garbati with Energy Systems Group. We are a certified D-CAM Massachusetts ESCO energy service company, and I'm responsible for business development. On the line is Christian Michelle, who's the project development engineer. The goal tonight is to share with you the strategy that we're going forward with, as well as get your support for potentially some additional funding that may be required for the project. Lots of compelling events, as Steve mentioned, and why we're here. So, first of all, you have aging. This is a beautiful building, historic building, and there's been a lot of good work. I know Vicky and the team have done the lighting, the building envelope. You've received Green Communities grants in the past, but your heating and cooling system has aged out, and it's pretty much toast. I don't think you'll get through next cooling season. So, you've got this equipment. I think the board has contemplated using ARPA money in the past to do an in-kind replacement. It's gas-fired. The master plan, which I know many of you have worked on, I think Ben and Deirdre, has goals around climate and decarbonizing, going to net zero by 2040, along with some other state goals to do that in municipal buildings. If you change and put an in-kind service in now, that equipment's going to last 20, 25 years. And if it's oil, I was giving it gas-fired, it won't be decarbonized. To decarbonize a building, you basically eliminate the onsite burning of fossil fuel, propane, oil, or gas. So, we were asked to come in and look at how could we decarbonize the building. We're doing something similar with the Hamilton Town Hall project. And so, and Vicky's also the shared energy manager there. So, we said, hey, how can we mobilize basically the same team, given this timeline that you have? Equipment needs to get changed. You've got the ARPA grant by the end of the year. It's got to go under contract. And you've got Green Communities now is out for another round, which is due October 18th. We were successful at helping Hamilton secure a half-a-million-dollar decarbonization grant. It's the third or fourth in the state. Last year, Green Communities started this program to help fund these types of projects that can be pretty capital-intensive. And twice a year, they'll give out one or two of these grants. And they are competitive. And so, we found a way to kind of focus the project on something that would be a very compelling and competing project with others, and we're able to secure that grant for Hamilton, and we're expecting to do so hopefully for you as well. If you could bring up that slide. So, basically, when you decarbonize, you basically are going to look at heat pump technologies to heat and cool your facility. Two primary means are air-to-air or geothermal. Geothermal has come into light because of the federal incentives that are now being provided under the IRA or the Inflation Reduction Act, which allows for, I know at my own home, I was able to get a 30% tax credit. As a municipality or nonprofit, you weren't allowed to do that because you don't file a tax return. But they've changed that to a direct-pay grant now. So, basically, the government's going to pay, federal government's going to pay almost a third of this geothermal system. So, now it's competitive, and it actually competes against air-to-air. A geo system uses groundwater that's roughly 55 degrees all year round. Air-to-air, we know, you're dealing with extreme weather, hot, cold days that you're trying to work off of, so it's not as energy efficient. And we also know that those are easier projects to do, so there, it's likely there's more competition, and the other projects will have, be air-to-air. But when you have a geothermal, that gets you, when Green Communities is looking at these grants, they want the biggest bang for the buck, right? So, that does reduce greenhouse emissions more than air-to-air. So, check the box, right? And then if we actually talk about going with solar as well, I know you have net-zero goals. So, you basically, once you electrify a building, if you're still buying from the grid, half the grid power is still fossil fuel-generated. So, you net-zero by doing some type of onsite generation or some net meter generation within the town that says, all my energy is being used with a green source, like solar or other fuel cell or something. So, this chart right here shows you, so the team, Steve, Joe, Vicky, myself, and Jeff, talked about, we really need to, you got to go to Green Communities. You got one shot at the apple. I mean, you could go back in, you know, the next year, you know, in the spring, but this project does have the timeline that we need to kind of, you know, we need to get this grant this round. So, we said, you got to go with your best shot. Your best shot is a geothermal. You did a high-low-medium. If you go in, you may not get it with an air-to-air project. If you add solar, sort of, even though they're not counting it, it's sort of the net zero, which is really what the state is promoting, and that gives you the best chance. So, this, at the top, GSHP stands for geothermal-sourced heat pump. We have three different options, one with no solar at all, one with solar where you own it, and one where you just use a purchase power agreement that you don't come up with any money, but a third party owns it, and you get some savings off of that rate that we use to help fund the project. You can see we have estimated project value lines for the systems. Basically, the solar adds about a little over half a million dollars to the project. ITC stands for investment tax credit. That's that direct-pay grant that I spoke about, basically a third of the project. They fund both the geothermal system, everything soup to nuts, as well as the solar system would get basically 30% funding from the federal government. We have your ARPA line item. Green Communities is the half-a-million-dollar grant. is the half a million dollar grant. And then Mass Saves has rebates. They actually improved the rebates by 30% when it's geothermal versus air-to-air, so 126,000. We have the next line, which is called basically a tax exempt lease purchase agreement. That's if you finance the project, every time you got money that came in, you bought it down, and then what's left, the savings over a 20-year period, typically what these, these energy projects are looked at, would pay for the debt service on that. So all that above the line stuff is budget neutral, no out-of-pocket money to the town at all. However, we do fall short almost in every project scenario where the town, to do the project, would need to kick in anywhere from 100 to 300,000 dollars, depending on the final structure of the deal. So the request would be, is that like a dead no-go? Is that something the board is open to? And what the thoughts or questions might be around that?
I will highlight that we are pretty close with free cash this year, and we're projecting another pretty big number, similar to last year. So, you know, we're continuing to ratchet up our revenue expenses, our revenue estimates, to bring that more in line with our proposed financial policy, which brings us in a regeneration of the four to six percent. But that's to say that we will probably have money to fund a, you know, a larger capital plan this year. And also, the ARPA funds, once the dust settles and we've reallocated to the other plans, there may be additional funds there. All that to say that
Bet on the come?
We probably could get the extra $100,000 if the board was interested in this project. And I think, you know, Bill highlighted, and it's important to say again, that the, this program is very competitive, and it's getting more competitive. And it seems like, and they were, they were successful in the most recent round, so they're, you know, they're familiar with the things they're looking for. And it seems like the geo systems are, you know, definitely weighted, and it's not just the geo system, but the whole project. So combining something like solar and going to net zero is only going to make you more competitive to get these grant monies, which is significant at 500,000 dollars, right? The project just doesn't work without us getting this grant. It'd be, you know, would probably be going back to an in-kind replacement gas burner. And if you go forward with a air, an air heat pump, air system, then, you know, you're reducing your likelihood of getting the grant as well. So what could appear to be a, you know, project budget neutral, we've already essentially appropriated 500,000 dollars. We wouldn't have to come up with another 100,000 if we went with the air, air system. But then you're running the risk of being less competitive in the grant process. Again, that's kind of the unknown piece. So, you know, that you may want to think about, you know, the competitiveness of the project and also the lifelong savings over, over the long term. Because I think geo, outside of year 21, or 20, going into 21, when the financing falls off, you know, you're going to have a much larger reduction in energy expenditures as well.
So do you have a recommendation?
I would recommend, yeah, going with, with one of the, one of the proposed geo systems that he's outlined. And do you have the, we can go into solar a little bit. We don't, you know, the solar can kind of come on and off. Obviously, the money's not part of, it's not a decision we have to make today. But I think, you know, including that solar piece in the package, understanding that, you know, it wouldn't make or break the project from a funding perspective. I mean, from a grant perspective, it would look good to produce the grant application, including the solar, so that puts us in more, a more of a competitive position, is that we'll be looking at the total project. But we do have the unknowns of the Historic District Committee, which they have been approving solar in the district, but it is very much a case-by-case process with that, with that committee.
Does the solar have to be onsite, or can it be offsite?
That's a good question.
Trade-off.
You typically want to put the solar behind the meter. That one gives you the most benefit because it offsets both delivery charges and energy charges. Offsite, it's typically a net metering credit, which is really a financial transaction. So
Does it have to be on the building, or can it be on the property as a parking?
So I don't know if you can bring up the, we did a heloscope, and to be able to talk through some of this a little bit. What we were contemplating was a canopy solar in the back over two of the parking sections. That would also provide, you know, provide some shading for parking. We could put some EV charging into some of the stanchions as part of, you know, that as well. Not a great picture because we lose the top half, but the top in the middle is the, is the back half of the town hall. So rather than in the front, you know, there's a lot of trees and I don't think any ground mount would work. It'd be fairly small and plus probably not palatable. But again, right behind, where we have car rows that are back-to-back, where you can maximize the use of the steel down the center to hold two, two stanchions out. And that would be about 80 KW of solar that would provide enough power over the year to, to be that zero.
And is the upper parking lot with the two large ones towards the bottom of the?
We looked at this here, this upper parking lot. The challenge you have is these are single parking lots. So again, I got to put a bunch of steel here and here, and I'm only getting, only getting one versus there. And there's a lot, these represent trees and shading area problems. So you've got a lot of challenges. And then you got neighbors that you start whacking trees. We did look at this area here. It slopes the wrong way. It's tight as well. And I don't know who that neighbor is, but
I think that's our shed, right?
That's the Enon.
That's the shed. So that might be your own property anyways. But, but this isn't final, but this was kind of something that we preliminarily did. So
You know, feedback would be helpful in terms of, is carport's totally out because you just don't like the look and you don't want that, or we got to find some ground mount option. The roof is asphalt shingles, I believe, right? Yeah. So it's a small, it's not a big area that faces the right way to get completely to net zero. So, but there's options. And I think that, as Steve mentioned, what we talked about today was putting in the grant application that the intent is to do solar. And it won't, we won't be jeopardizing if we get the grant and then we don't do the solar, but it, it gives us a better story upfront. So, and then if solar doesn't pan out for some reason, it's not like they're helping fund the solar with the grant. It just, so it won't, they won't come back and say, we're not giving you the whole grant because half of it was for the solar.
So putting those solar panels in the, in that parking lot, I think would just look hideous.
Aesthetically pleasing, the Historical Committee or Board is not going to approve the front.
What's that?
The Historical Board is not going to approve that front section.
Right.
I don't know if they would approve the back section. That, you know, there could be conversations with the Wenam Museum of how you could utilize that space as well. And you could try to sell it because it's a shading aspect and those kind of things. But that front one, absolutely not. But it being the size that it is, is there a way that we can move it backwards into next to the shed?
You mean into the current parking lot?
Yeah. So like if you go this way, right? So if we take this one and move it either out here or out here, that's half the size of the one.
That's the slope, doesn't it?
Sloping issue.
So the, the question, I would say, is whether the upper parking lot is usable. And, you know, we certainly, I would envision something that perhaps we realign the parking up there so that you had central parking with the drive around the perimeter, if that's clear.
Yeah.
How would you do that?
Well, right now, you come off the road, and in the center, you go into the parking spots. But if we have a central parking area with the drive around to get to the, you could have a whole center as the canopy.
Oh, got it.
Directional parking, like market basket, how you got to go around to go in.
That's creative.
So there's, the other question is, what's our real timeline here? So we've got to get the ARPA contracted by 31 December, correct? Of '25 or '24?
Yeah, 31 December of '24.
Of '24. So, and then when would we have some indication on the, the grant being successful or not?
We may, before the end of the year, get some verbal cues. But they typically would not give you the official letter, probably till sometime in the beginning of the year, unfortunately. One idea Steve and I talked about was, was a contract that basically had two options. It said if, you know, but, you know, I don't know if we want to go back to the in-kind, you know, but that's, you know, that's the challenge.
Well, I think, again, I, I don't think, if we don't get the grant, I'm not sure the air source would work. I mean, I'm not sure the town would be willing to put up the, you know, you're probably looking at another 500,000 or 600,000. Not 100,000 to go. But, you know, so I think that the alternative, and what we discussed before, was to commit the money because this ESG would be, you know, they're kind of doing this whole project, whether, what, no matter what we do. And so we've, you know, we've already gone through the proper procurement channels to comply with mass procurement law. And now it would be a situation where, you know, we've, basically we committed the funds to do a project using 500,000 of our funds. So it's either going to be get the grant and do the geo, or not get the grant and do an in-kind replacement. Because at the end of the day, we have to replace the HVAC in this building. It's rotting in walls.
Sounds like a non-starter.
The, well, the in-kind, I think, is the cheapest option in something we can afford without raising additional money. So the reason we have three, we have three options, the way I see it, we have these heat pumps. It's basically, it's like a big mini split, right? It's that, and then you have geo, and then you have your in-kind replacements. The in-kind replacement is just putting essentially the new version of whatever is in there. The mini split is like, the unit's outside, but it would electrify because you're going to heat pumps. And then you have geo, which is now, you know, achievable because, you know, the federal grants, if we get the, the other grant. But if you don't get the grant, then in my mind, mini splits are out because it would be asking the town to raise probably another 500 or 600,000 in additional to the 500,000 that we're already putting in from ARPA, if that makes sense. So at least in my mind, and it's really only those two projects, it's geo or in-kind replacement.
The, I'm on a webinar on this. I don't know if you know the answer later this week, but ARPA, so it has to be contracted by the, by the end of the year. Is there a date where it has to be, you know, final completed, the construction? Is that?
I want to say another 12 months, but
End of '26.
End of '26, all right. So two years.
You've got a couple of years, right? So we could, if we don't get it in this round for some reason, the spring will be here. You want to take it to town meeting anyways, and then you go and it's based on getting a spring grant. But
Sorry, I mean, I guess in that vein, and it's a good point, is we could just keep all three options open.
Yeah. Keep, keep going until you get it. But
Right now, we need to be affirmative on one of the three options, at least to the point that we can go forward with the grant application.
Yeah. So I think really, the, the short of it is, we need some strong direction from the board that you're on board with, you know, assuming the money comes in, and we're pretty confident it will, that you'll, you're, you're willing to support an additional 100,000 in spending to go with the geo option for the application purposes. Because if you're not, then that falls apart as well. And then maybe we're going back to looking at the heat pump system, I mean, the mini split system for, with the grant as well. Because we have 500,000. To make the geo work, we need six. To make the heat pump work, we probably don't need any more money. Probably the grant and the 500,000 could do it. But we wouldn't be as competitive in the grant process. So there's a higher likelihood that we wouldn't get the grant because people are coming with pretty elaborate net zero. Yeah, that's my recommendation. As long as you support
Anyone disagree?
I didn't hear what you said.
Yeah.
It's a geothermal option. And it's an incremental 100K.
Maybe 125. Because let's assume we can't get solar through the commission, or for whatever reason, it just doesn't happen. Then I think that option was 125. And there's no, there's no solar PPA to buy that down a little bit more, or there's no additional money to own it yourself. And, you know, we could contemplate what that looks like later, once we have the better solar options. But
And what I hear Steve saying is that as she's looking at how we're spending and revenues coming in, that 125K is probably within a rounding error.
My belief is that it's available to you if
Okay, I'm sorry, Ben.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what you said. So the geo option could work even if we can't get the solar panels
Yes.
cited, but it might cost 25,000 more.
It's 125 grand, I think.
Versus 100?
Versus 100.
Okay.
Yeah. The PPA solar, there's a little bit of savings
Right.
that helps sort of offset some of that.
Right.
Your solar option long-term is better to own it if you're going to do it, because then it's yours and they last longer than 20 years and you'll save and you don't have to be dealing with another contract and
So, but not, but the distinction isn't whether we own them or lease them. It's, you're saying it could be done with no solar?
It could be done with no solar.
Okay.
I think the strategy is to say where our intent is to do solar
Right.
for Green Communities competitiveness. But if that falls off, it's not going to hurt your Green Communities grant, or it won't hurt the project.
Okay.
This won't be net zero.
Sure. Right. Because I, I mean, I think it'd be great to explore the feasibility of having solar in the upper parking lot. I'd like to see some elevation renderings or something at some point, when we get to that point, to see what they would look like from Town Hall, from the parking lot. Because I, this, this would, I think appropriately, would not pass muster with the HTC, which, which does have jurisdiction over
Is that because the museum shares some of that parking in front there? Is that, or is that too close to the front?
Yeah. I mean, I think that, you know, we're within the Historic District and the aesthetics of the Historic District when it comes to adding structures or changing structures is squarely within the jurisdiction of the Historic District Commission. And I just don't, as some of my colleagues have said, I just don't see that that would, that that would pass. And I don't think it should pass, because I think they'd be unsightly. But I think if they could be in the upper parking lot. But if that's also not feasible, it's heartening to hear that the geo solution could still work without the use of solar panels, if we came to that.
So do you have any from us?
Wait, I have a comment.
Oh, sorry.
I'm just going to disagree a little bit with what's been said. I'd like to not, I mean, I understand the issues with aesthetics and the historic look and so forth. But I'd like two things, not to presuppose what the Historic District Commission might say. And two, that we are in fact in a climate crisis, and at some point, the aesthetics cease to matter because there is overwhelming evidence that the climate crisis is overtaking us, right? So at some point, this, I think, has to overtake our concern with aesthetics. And I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay. Fair, fair point.
Do we have the availability of having our neighbors that are going to be abutting this way in? Have we informed them that this is our potential plan?
This is pretty much hot off the press.
It would be good to be able to allow them to come to a meeting and discuss further what their thought process is. It is literally in their backyard if we move it in the back up to the second section.
Like they said, we, you can, strategically, we can move forward with the application proposing that we're going to strive to integrate solar, however, through this public process of bringing in the neighbors, you know, or the HTC, or any number of reasons, that part of the project could fall apart.
Right.
And we would still move forward with the geo. It would just be not a net zero project, and there wouldn't be a solar component.
Yeah. So it's a goal statement at this point in time?
The, the distance from the upper parking lot to the Town Hall, if that's doable, do we not have any parcel available behind the police station? do we not have any parcel available behind the police station that would be just about the same distance?
I don't know. Off the top of my head, yeah.
Obviously, though, you know, the, the decisions on the solar details can come later, right? What we really need now is the decision to go forward, the geothermal, with the anticipation that we look at solar options.
Yeah, I guess what that said, maybe we could look at, this is kind of, it's scope of discussion tonight, but we could look at the police station roof, the
You can, but you have that, the right-of-way issue. They won't let you cross it. So it would have to be a net metered situation.
Oh, you won't. I see.
It's not, it's not adjacent property. We can't run a line to it, to the building.
Interesting. Okay.
But maybe they want solar too. Maybe we could include it.
Yeah.
Well, I'm excited. ESG is excited. We thank you for the opportunity and, and good luck with the, your decisions in the project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. So do we need a vote or just consensus to go ahead with one of the options?
I think consensus is fine. We're not committing to anything at this point. It's just a general direction.
Alrighty. And I, I love this. Continued discussion and potential vote on Select Board goals and objectives for fiscal year '25. So the original, at the last meeting, I said, and we're going to have these early on in the meeting. And then unfortunately, we had way too much, right?
Yeah.
So at our next meeting, which is
We'll front-load it.
On, on 20, on 22nd, we're going to talk about our goals and objectives early on.
Sounds good.
Okay? So are you guys all right with that?
Good.
So I'm going to move to adjourn the October 8th Select Board meeting at 8:41 PM. And our next meeting is October 22nd at 6:30 PM. Here.
Second.
All right. Peter Boths, yes?
Giordre, yes.
Ben?
Karen, yes.
Karen, yes.
Good.
So Ben, how you doing?
Better. Nice. Yeah. I think I'm boarding off.